All right. Good afternoon. It is four thirty and I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library Board of Trustees on today, June ninth, twenty twenty two. We do not have any visitors present wanting to speak to the board, nor do we have any correspondence. But I do need to appoint a pro tem treasure. Mr. Cameron, would you fulfill that responsibility today?
Yes.
All right. So Mr. Cameron will be our treasure pro tem. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion and a second to consider our consent agenda today?
So move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out my appreciation and EBSC's appreciation for the partnership with Teachers Locker for the seasons of sharing. That's reflected in the director's report at least.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We're moving on next to governance. And there is a memorandum from the Building and Browns Committee, which the committee consisted of myself, Richard Clements and Rick Cameron as a recommendation for a project for a general obligation bond should bond funding be available. And do we have a motion to consider this recommendation?
I'll move for purposes of getting it down on the table for discussion.
Thank you. A second. We have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
So will will you all go through and explain how we got to this? Okay. Then I'll wait.
Okay. So we may want to move ahead and look at the matrix. I think that might actually be helpful in the discussion, which is the next document in your packet. And Rick and Richard, if you want to chime in at all. I think the we reviewed all of the potential projects that were recommended in the MKM facilities master plan with the administrators and Scott, Heather, Lori, and also Lamont to really think about the projects and really think about what might be available based on potential bond funding that would be available as well as the the need of the various facilities. I think our rationale was really the fact that McCullough is highly used. And if you look at the matrix, you'll see that based on the assessment, it was actually a high priority level based on the other projects. It there's not been a really major renovation or update done there in a number of years. And the estimated work for the complete project is under the threshold of our potential to be able to bond in the next year.
Yeah, one of the things I totally agree with what you said, Alenda, and the matrix really points that out that for all the criteria there, McCullough really comes to the top as the probably the most important project to get accomplished. And then as far as the bonding, the work to be done there meshes almost perfectly with the bond amount.
Any other thoughts from Building and Grounds Committee? Richard, anything you want to add?
Just, you know, it was it was a project that kind of lined up with what the master plan was looking to do across all of the footprint. And it was a good way to start the master planning process or fulfilling the master plan's findings in the community with one major project that again, all lined up with what what our bonding requirements would be.
I think one of the other things that was discussed in Scott and Heather, I see Lamont in the back too could chime in is that there's some difficulty in this four million dollar geo of dividing projects up. So once you get past this one project with McCullough, you would have to then start dividing projects up. And there are some difficulties with the given bond when it comes to dividing projects up.
Any other questions or discussion?
So for purposes of the motion, the motion is to accept this recommendation. And that's it.
It would be to accept the recommendation should bond funding be available?
Keyword being should.
Yes, correct.
And then we'll go to the city council, which has to approve it.
Correct, correct. Correct. That is correct. So we're not technically obligating any funds with this motion.
We're saying should funds be available?
Should funds be available?
This is the project we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, we're, and I don't disagree with that.
Any other questions or discussion around?
And one thing Eric too, I think that we needed to do this in order to go to the city council to tell them what we think, you know, not just that we want to bond, but that we want to bond for this specific. Stick to that story. Strike that from the record.
All right. Any further discussion before we consider the motion? All right, we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the Building and Grounds Committee. Should bond funding be available? To to fund the McCullough portion of the MKL's facility plan project. Is that an accurate?
Yeah. I'll look to our turn. Well, I think so. I mean, should, would it even be more appropriate to say that should funding be available? This is the project that the board would like to pursue first. This is the project I think we'll put in the positive, but yes.
Okay, so we have a motion should should funding be, that was, that's, I think the motion we're gonna go with, right?
We're Eric take the motion and Sheila second.
Yes, okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second, although in favor of accepting the motion signified by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, finance report.
Our appropriations report for the end of May shows that we have a budget balance remaining of ten million, three hundred and six ninety thousand one hundred forty five dollars and twenty cents or probably sixty nine percent of the original budget. As you can see, there's not a lot of categories that are at current time in jeopardy of going over in the year. But we will continue to keep an eye on individual purchases each month as we as we go through this. I do want to remind everybody that this particular appropriation report does not include the invoices dated after just May thirty first, twenty twenty two, that are on the board invoice. So the invoices that are listed for June first and June ninth are not included in this. So these will come out and show on the next.
All right, and Lori, investments?
Our investments to date as of May thirty first for all board funds are eleven million, six hundred fifty eight thousand, one hundred dollars. The average daily yield for May was point four nine eight seven percent or up almost two tenths of a percent. And for the average daily yield year to date, it's point two one five four or up almost five hundredths of a percent since April. But still climbing.
Approval of bills, Mr. Cameron.
I make a motion to approve bills, including invoices in the total amount of four hundred ninety thousand dollars, or four hundred ninety thousand, eleven dollars and eighty four cents in payrolls for May sixth, two thousand twenty two, in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and ninety eight dollars and five cents in May twentieth, two thousand twenty two, in the amount of three hundred ninety five thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars and twenty nine cents.
That's made in the form of a motion. Do we have a second? So we have a motion and a second to accept the bills. Any discussion?
Have a question on page forty seven of our packet, which is check number zero, three, three, nine, three, four for Frost Brown Todd LLC Indianapolis. Says claim number, what is that?
It is attorney fees that we have to pay out for a claim against our directors and officers liability insurance for wrongful termination.
Where did that file?
Actually, it's not wrongful termination.
Discrimination, I'm sorry. Yep.
I was not provided. We had a claim that was filed against them. And that was by?
Us.
That.
You cannot say?
No. It's a personal issue.
Sorry.
No, there was no opinion litigation attempt. It's not. It's an EU claim and it has not been reviewed, but because of the nature of it, we are obligated to contact our attorney through our errors and omissions. We were hoping to use our own local attorneys, but our insurance company requested that they retain their own. So they have been working with Aaron Bauer. Okay. Was scheme at the beginning and it's been turned over to them per our insurance.
And that and that claim was made.
Give us some. Selecting by the insurance carrier, why are the insurance there being for? Why?
It's before the deductible. Does it still towards the deductible? You have to pay him to the deductible. How much is that? Uh, Lori, do you remember how much the deductible is?
Not off the top of my head.
I don't get to a thousand, ten thousand. I believe it's probably closer to five thousand. The usually standard on this policy, but that's not a hundred percent accurate, but that's usually standard.
We always write. You two would know.
Any other questions, Richard? Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the bills and invoices. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Lori's budget calendar.
In your package, you'll see a proposed budget calendar for twenty twenty three, and these deadlines are in conjunction with our meeting dates, but also within the deadlines that are set by the Director of the Indiana Budget Division. We'll have our proposed twenty twenty three budget presented to our finance committee. Not sure exactly what dates were available for that committee yet, so it, but it will happen that last week of July between the twenty fifth and the twenty eighth. And we will set that once we can confer with the finance committee. On August the fourth or before, we will receive the proposed budget by email to the full library board. And that will be after the finance committee reviews it. On August the eleventh at a regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting, we'll do our first reading by the full library board. And then we'll have the DLG of budget workshop that we attend each year. Normally that's around the eighteenth or nineteenth, but I heard from our DLGF representative from Southwest that he's looking to get an earlier start. So that might be bumped up a week ahead. So it might be right before or right as we're getting ready to do our first reading. And then on August twenty sixth, we'll need to submit notice to taxpayers of our proposed budget and tax levies and the public hearing and adoption dates. And that'll go on the Indiana Gateway site for anybody, any taxpayer to go in and view. On September the eighth, the public hearing will take place here on our proposed budget during the regularly scheduled meeting. On September the twelfth, we've been invited to make our presentation to the city council, our declared fiscal body. And on October thirteenth, at the regularly scheduled meeting, we'll do the adoption of the twenty twenty three budget. And then shortly the Monday after that, October seventeenth, I've already entered it into gateway as a as an adopted amount, so that it'll go to the LGF for review. And then it'll be also be out there for the taxpayers to view as well.
And I'm assuming we do need this in the form of a motion to accept the calendar. So do we have a motion and a second to accept that proposed budget calendar? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the proposed budget calendar for twenty twenty three signify by saying aye. And those opposed, nay. The motion passes. Under other business foundation, like liaison report, Mr. Cameron.
Yes, the EVPL Foundation Board met at on April twenty, two thousand twenty two, we met here in the boardroom upstairs. The agenda included a financial report from Lori Tomlin, year-to-date finances, statement of activity, statement of position. We also looked at the period, that period for the Schwab account. Scott Kenny was present and reported on the facility's master plan and the decision matrix. The old business that was taken up was the financials from the two thousand twenty two Friends Committee Book Sale, which I don't know that it was a record, but it was very good. Six thousand, nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and sixty six cents was the last book sale held in this room. In the first one, we talked about that where we had accepted credit cards. We also talked about a foundation five-year plan, which would include board member recruitment, donor software, and the EVPL and foundation overall plan when it came to Scott's report on the facilities master plan. New business was the setting and discussion for the the larger book sale and then the follow-up ball book sale. August sixth and seventh will be the date of the book sale at Washington Square Mall. November twelfth and thirteenth will be the next book sale here at the Browning Room, I think it will be again. With that said, the next meeting of the board, EVPL board will be July twentieth. And we are planning on a workshop scheduled with some things that we wanted to look for as far as that foundation overall five-year plan. Happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Any question? All right. Staff spotlight.
Hello. That's hot. So for all of you, I think there's a couple of new faces, but I'm Katie Reinicki, the Outreach Manager, and it's been about a year since I last presented to you guys. And in that past year, there's been a lot of change in the new department, including new employees. We have a part-time and a full-time facilitator in outreach, and one of those is here to speak a little bit about the extended services and new services we have, so.
Hello, my name is Ryan. I am the new experience for Still There and Outreach. And I took over for Zach previously, same position. And the main thing that I took over for him were the youth services. So there was an ongoing program that was partnering with local preschools and daycares to get materials delivered to them. It was falling into an issue mainly with COVID, obviously, that we had to discontinue it and also scalability. So I took it over, changed it up a bit, and we are currently partnering with fourteen different organizations in the area with seven hundred and ninety-two children that we're serving. These are just monthly material deliveries with a focus on early and pre-literacy. So usually ages zero to six. There's a lot of demand that we've seen. And we're constantly growing it. So I mean, I plan, I've identified about a hundred organizations we could work with, and I want to try and grow that every every month, just add more and more. We also have a storytime visitation program that we do for the youth where EVPL storytellers go out into the community and just do a storytime once a month. And we're currently partnered with seven different locations for that. And then just some stats for the year-to-date on Outreach, which can be found in the public statistics report that's getting put out. For year-to-date Outreach events, we've had fifty-eight events with a total of thirty-five hundred and ninety-eight attendance with Festival of Nations accounting for almost a third of that. It was very good attended. We will be there next year. And then well, that's actually that. That's about it.
Yes, Ryan has been very, very, very helpful in this small, small department, and we're continuing to look at how we can meet that very, very large demand out in the community with a small department, and we continue to do that. But the 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 main thing I wanted to introduce to you all today was the newest service that the Outreach Department is providing, and that is to senior assisted living and nursing facilities in the community. Throughout May and towards the end of April as well, we visited eight senior assisted living facilities. At those facilities, we spoke and engaged with about a hundred and forty-five residents, and we signed up thirty of the residents with library cards. In it was a dual purpose, you know, one of the reasons we went out was for them to see us. So they knew that we were there to serve them as well, even if they couldn't come to our facilities. But additionally, it was for us to gain some intel into what exactly we could provide to them. You know, there's a list, there's a myriad, but what what's most important is what they deem they need and what they want to see from us. So based off of those conversations and additionally with the assisted, the the facility activity directors, which most of them have, we came up with a few essential services, one of those being a material delivery that's very similar to the daycare program we have where we go out and we give them about a hundred materials or so and that they get to keep there at the facility for a few months. And then after those few months, we will bring those materials back and we will provide them a fresh set. That is one of the items that we will provide. Another one is a more individual approach. Those who do sign up with library cards, they can go into their accounts and they can put items on hold, specific items that they want to see. And we will include those items in the delivery for the next month. We're working with our IT department on the, you know, the logistics behind that, but we're pretty confident that we have a good service going. And then finally, just general activities. This is one we haven't really solidified yet, but we know it's to some degree, we do want to provide some sort of more active engagement, whether that be, you know, we're coming and we're bringing them. One of the ideas was giving away a small plant that they could keep and they could tend to and care for. Activities similar to what we do at other programs like craft, things like that, that they can do with their hands. We're still working that out, and we want to make sure that we have something solidified before we put that in stone. But we are ready to roll out the other two, and we're pretty excited about it. We had very positive experiences when we were there. Many of many of them were shocked that what we had was free. We did book giveaways and they were like, you're, I don't have to bring this back. No, this is, here's the key. They were very excited about that. And each organization has very, very different needs and different what they already have. Some of these organizations have a beautiful library all their own, and they don't need as much from us, whereas others, they don't even have a library. So we're working to basically with our capacity and with what they need, find that that happy middle ground. I think. Yep, that's about all. Did you have any questions for myself or Ryan?
I'm new. So what exactly is outreach? Is it like bringing books to people until the people come to books?
So that is definitely part of it. Essentially, it is everything with that happens outside of the walls of the library. We recognize that there are communities in the Evansville area that are not capable of coming to our physical branches. So we do what we can as the Outreach Department to bring the library services to them. Additionally, we show up at large community events, like Ryan had mentioned, the Festival of Nations, where there are tabling opportunities to go out and basically raise awareness of what the library does. We'll set up a table, we'll give out information, and we'll sign up people for library cards. So raise awareness that we are there, but also literally go to those who can't come to us. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Quick question. It, I think your last presentation, if you were here a while back, you were working on, and I don't know if that's still under Outreach, was the data collection for community and looking at demographics and all that stuff. Is that part of Outreach or?
Yes, it is. And that is continuing. So the initial research that I had done was looking at the demographics in the community where there were areas that represented barriers of some sort. It could be economic, crime. What are some of the other internet access, transportation, things like that? And we looked at high priority areas where several of those barriers overlapped. And we set up the EVPL TU program where we would go out and set up a table and talk to those communities. And yes, that is still going on. There are several success stories based off of those. We now have a very good relationship with a Grandin Point Mobile Home Park out on the northwest side. That's very far away from a lot of our, well, from most of our locations. And that is one community that is participating in both the daycare material delivery and the storytime. And another one is out on the northeast side, Carriage House Apartments, who also have a scene, has a senior facility. So those are continuing relationships. And those EVPL TU programs, we do have more scheduled for this year. We wanted to focus in in May on the seniors. That was the priority for that month, just so that we could get a lot of information gathering. So we didn't have as many in the past month, but we are still doing those. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then kind of a pull-up question. When you're working with some of these other communities and there appears to be possibly an overlap, do you bring in other departments within the library? I was, when I think of senior, I think of, you know, our archival process and there's any ability to capture stories and things like that.
Absolutely. It is, it's interesting you mention that because that actually was one of the services that when my department got together after all of those visits to the senior centers, we said, okay, what did we, what did we see? And one of the results of that was some sort of program where we bring out the material to capture stories. So kind of, we were kind of calling it a reverse storytime where we're not telling them the stories. They're telling us their stories and capturing those in some way. That's one of those that we haven't really firmed up the logistics yet, but I think that will be a very, very heavily used program that I think will be interesting. Additionally, you had mentioned other organizers or non-organization departments within the library. One of the things we do is highlight the other thing, the other programs going on, the other departments going on in the library. One of those is Maker Lab, a Maker Central, and we would bring out let's see where, oh, SEMA Art and Science Expo. There, we took a 3D printer there, and it was a huge, huge success. And as a result of that, we had, we, we can't, of course, you know, correlation does not equal causation, but there was a rise in attendance at the Maker Labs during their open hours. So we do try to encourage that. And always at all of our outreach events, we pull in staff from other locations as well. So obviously, the three of us cannot attend three to four outreach events a week. So we are constantly pulling and we get a lot of, we got a lot of help from the locations.
Thank you.
Is there the possibility in the future that as you continue to work and partner with your senior citizens and other places that they have some way of maybe bringing some of their patrons here or to do some of their own? or to do some of their own storytelling uh to create those activities and things that they may be able to generate a great deal of information, say, to a younger population about the history of Evansville?
Absolutely. Yes, I I think so. Uh transportation is always a challenging um concept, but I don't.
Sure, but I just think that most of these facilities have some form of transportation. And that maybe some of their patrons that are there have an opportunity, they just don't have the the means to get there.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So possibly collaborate and then allow them, which I know they, it's like going on a free ice cream trip. They would be allowed to come in those, you know, specific ones, and then possibly use them as part of your storytelling to make it really authentic and that kids could really gravitate and begin to understand Evansville.
I absolutely love that idea. Yeah, that um I'm making a note of that as we speak, but yes, I I definitely like that. I've heard of programs similar to that in other or, and I think we've actually attempted to do it in the past, but I'll look into that. Thank you for that, Ms. Hough.
I'm a seniors, I understand.
Well, I might be recruiting you then.
Thanks, Katie. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board?
So so I know that generally we're supposed to put our motions in to get them on the agenda, so I'll save it. But just, we've had conversations, the email, the tenor of my motion or my request is going to be along the lines of cataloging, we're cataloging the vendors that we have and the term of those agreements. And then sa- and please don't get me wrong, anybody. I have no intention or desire to micromanage the staff of the library. Scott and his team do a great job. But I do think there are things that warrant boards' input on before decisions are made. And I'll just tell you right now that the last meeting caught me off guard with Baker Tilly and Ice Miller here. I have no idea why they were here, was a part of the selection process, don't think we have a standing contract with any of those kinds of things. And that's a big project. Those are, those are big things that they get, get lots of scrutiny from the public. And and I I see that as my role is to be part of that scrutiny, um to represent the board that appointed me. So I'll figure out how to word that or word spend it, but.
All right. So at this point, you're not making that as a motion, it's just a comment.
Yeah, I don't think I can. I want to do it. I want to follow the process, but I just, I just want to make sure that we.
If you're just requesting information though, I don't have it made a motion.
No, I don't really need a motion, but I mean, I don't know if the library staff maintains a catalog of vendors in in, you know, the term of the agreements and those kind. I I don't know if you maintain that or not.
But I think that's where we start. You can request information from us.
Why don't we ask, why don't you request that be added to the next meeting's agenda?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure we can get a vendor list now knowing the terms of how long use those vendors would be pretty hard to give with those.
No, and and I I begin, I don't, I don't want to make this more than it is. But it, that one last time really caught me off guard. And I just, you know, and I don't have anything against Baker Tilly or Ice Miller, either one. I mean, they may be the best in the world, I don't know. But we didn't have any input. And we didn't, and I didn't know it was coming, maybe I should have, so.
Could I just ask the the clarification point? Because we have a four, a binder that's four hundred pages long of all of our vendors that we've paid over the years. So specifically, are, is there specific categories that you're looking for? And I can tell you that my offices, my staff are responsible for tracking different types of contracts. We have service contracts for facilities. We have service contracts for databases. And so, and we also have service contracts for our professional services.
So the, so the spirit of my request is in the category of professional services. And it is for those things that are probably going to fall outside of the things that come during normal budgetary discussions. You know, at budget time, we know about office supplies, we know about all those vendors, and we talk about budget. I I I don't have any concern. It's those, those professional services that are fairly open-ended and that sometimes are attached to big-ticket items.
Sure. Well, I think perfect example of this is we had, uh when we were working on. Yeah, but a little bit more than that is, is like, for example, when we were looking at the master planning, we evaluated multiple levels of providers before we picked one.
Yeah.
So we at least had some, you know, oversight there, what we wanted and so. I can go.
Thank you.
Any other discussion to come?
Follow up. How do we choose Ice Miller?
I smile.
She could answer, you could probably answer that.
Ice Millers are, is our current existing uh bond legal counsel, because we still have two leasing corporation bonds that are open and um won't mature till the end of twenty twenty-three, and they are the bond legal counsel on those.
Are they bonded with counsel for the, that's all, let's see.
There are, they're the libraries. It's just so happens we had to go through the leasing corporation, not the library, because they exceeded the threshold of the bonding capacity of the library at the time they were issued. So Ice Miller has. Ice Miller has continued to be the library's legal bond legal counsel as we have issued and refinanced those particular bonds.
But those would have been, those pick the bond, why the less or? So they want, they were, they were less forward, bond counsel on the library.
It's one in the same.
No, it's really not. Um so they were the less horse counsel and just walked over to this.
They were our counsel first. They were brought in to assist with the leasing corporation, the leasing corporations counsel. Well, these, these are, yes, you're right, still leasing corporation bonds. But those are the bonds we have on the books, and so those are the bonds, there's in that perspective, there still are the leasing corporation with the debt assigned to the leasing corporation that we pay, the library still pays. They are, they're the ones who still come in and help us and assist us. That's the reason they were brought in.
And my, my concern is not really in that vein. I I follow what you're saying. But I think my, my concern is more along the lines of there's probably nobody sitting in the board right now that was here when they were selected the first time. And time passes, and these are new bonds that we're talking about and 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 new project. And I just, I just want to make sure that we are all we know all the facts.
Right.
Um especially if some of us are going to get asked to go lobby city councilman or speak to the public about, you know, your your tax rates because of a bond issue. I I want to make sure that I have an ample opportunity to weigh in on it.
And and just to follow up, to clarify, when we have bond counsel um and advisors, like for example, Baker Tilly, we had, they were instrumental in helping draft the comprehensive financial plan. Is that part of, I know the comprehensive, the financial plan addresses, you know, funding and budgets and what related to the payment of our bond obligations. But is that all part of bond counsel and and bond advisors? When they're doing something like the comprehensive financial plan, which they're engaged in again, correct?
Correct. So they aren't, they aren't specific to the, the bond counsel. They are a municipal advisor from a financial perspective.
Okay.
Baker Tilly, and and I understand it was years ago, believe me, I walked through the whole thing. We asked the county, but the tax cap laws that went into effect in two thousand twelve, we asked the county to collaborate with us and put together some type of plan, financial plan, as to how we were going to tackle these circuit breaker tax credits that were going to come our way in the next year. And the county declined to participate. And so we went out and got two votes from two reputable firms that were miss, like I said, municipal advisors. And we actually selected somebody who was, at that time, they're called Umball, Baker Tilly bought them out. We actually selected the other one for a lesser price, but they were untimely and unsatisfactory in their delivery of what the scope of work entailed. And so we went back to Umball at the time and asked if they would honor their prior year's pricing, and they did. They did a comprehensive financial plan for us with all the um circuit breaker tax credits that were coming our way, how we could adjust that, how we could balance our budget from year to year with the income versus our expenditures to ensure that we maintain some type of um reserves on hand for our bonding process. And when Umball came in that first year, we were in the process of refinancing those bonds, leasing core bonds, which are the twenty thirteens. They're the ones who stepped in and said, not our bond advisors at the time, they're the ones who stepped in and said, you really should take a look at utilizing the savings from refinancing to offset your circuit breaker tax credits. And you can use it over a period of years. And so from that point, we have continued to, at half the pricing charges in the first um comprehensive financial plan, engage them again because they knew the library system. We didn't have to go through discovery process. We didn't have to utilize multiple hours to get them up to speed with where we were, and they've kind of helped us along the way. The last one we did was in twenty nineteen. For those of you on the board, then you might remember that we had um Baker Tilly come in at the end of the year, and they talked about what it was going to look like for us if once our bonds started retiring and they started rolling off. And that's why we went back to them this time, because they're very familiar with what that looked like. Um it wasn't to say they were going to be our bonded by, or you know, our finance advisors are bonding, but they were the ones who could help kind of guide us to get to where we need to be. And that's why we brought them in to help.
Is it contract with them on an outward basis or fixed rate per year?
We usually do a project-based contract with them, which is the comprehensive financial plan.
So how was that?
In the, so the initial one was eighteen thousand. The two updates after that were nine thousand each. And the um last one in twenty nineteen that was done was um ten thousand, but we asked them to do additional um research and assist us with the bonding roll-off information. So it was ten thousand. And we haven't gotten the final for this one because I haven't completed it yet. They haven't completed the comprehensive financial plan update that they start, that we engaged them in to start for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five.
I'm, that background is very helpful.
Yeah, sure.
But.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn this June ninth meeting, and thank you all very much, meeting adjourned.